We had that everyone is prepared for the annual Veterans Day celebration, which is one of Beaufort's favorite traditions to honor those who have been served. And then our fifth group have been learning about civics and kid governance program and are getting ready for their mock election. And here at Pom Rock, um, over the past week, we had the SWC's and we had that the girls. Um, also at Pom Rock last week, we had an exciting kickoff to the Spirit Week, um, with the pep rally, pretty fun great game that brought the entire school together. During Spirit Week, there was lots of participation in the Spirit Days and, uh, we had a food drive in the Southbury Food Bank that was run by a student-led organization. Uh, we also had our homecoming celebration for last week's football game, um, food, music, um, a DJ, uh, bouncy house, and club tables that clubs from Palm Senate could include in the homecoming celebration. And they also, uh, granted to the game, you came to celebration. At Long Meadow, they had their October School Assembly, all of leopard pride, and fifth grade students shared their kid governing platform. First grade class saying about jobs in our community. Third grade students shared their, uh, research projects for Hispanic Heritage Month about famous people in the Hispanic community. Um, LMS PTO Family Fun Nights where the school community got together and decorated pumpkins. And students earned, uh, pride pieces and voted for their first Spirit Day within the Spirit Week. And, uh, Rochambeau, October third, RMS had their Hispanic Heritage Celebration as a part to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month. And over eighty students, staff, and family members, um, were attendants and, uh, they were able to, uh, be treated in a student-led cultural dancing, uh, music and food. It was a great way to get the community together and they're looking forward to more celebrations like that. In mid-October, RMS Student Council had Spirit Week and they had fun and inspiring Spirit Days to lead their first pep rally of the school year with fun games and all score recognition. And sixth grade participated in team building, um, on a field trip to Club Getaway in Connecticut. And they enjoyed zip lines and numerous veterans. Thank you very much for your reports. Appreciate that new questions.
Um, thank you very much. And just, uh, if you maybe are thinking of things to, to let us know, uh, I'd be very interested in, cause I believe all three of you are in student government in some way. And, um, that's a bit of a gray area to me. So if you ever want to talk about, like how that sort of functions in the, in the school and what roles are and how you interact with the student body and how you take leadership positions, just how that kind of all works together, that'd be something interesting. If you choose.
You can.
And then like. You know, you know, it's a light news day and you might, you know, want to talk about something near and dear to your size.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I know, sorry.
All right. Um, next we have student recognition, um, National Merit Scholarship, Dr. Paul Jones.
Sorry, they're used to coming to me for a deep breath afterwards. So, um, thank you all for being here, um, to recognize some students, um, of ours at Pom Rock High School have, who have exhibited, um, truly great academic prowess. Uh, one point three million students take the PSAT, uh, as juniors. That is the test that is used to, um, to, uh, cipher out the National Merit Scholarships. So tonight we are going to recognize first our students who are recognized as committed students. Um, so they have a certificate and, um, we're going to ask them to come up and thank them, uh, for how hard they've worked and the growth that they've shown over their time in region fifteen at Pom Rock High School. And then we have one student who's moving on as a semi-finalist that we'll recognize as well. So up first, also in our drum line, Herod Hegg. Next up, a heart full of love. Eli Hammer. Also in our drum line, Evan Kewin. And Will Bracer. So again, it's one point three million students on average every year that take the PSAT as juniors that are entered into this competition. Um, students who we just recognized are in one percent of that one point three million. So we give them one more round of applause. As semi-finalists, you, um, come down to the point five, so half percent of all of that one point three billion students, uh, as you narrow it down to the top of the top students, uh, by filling out some different application type things, um, and scholarship materials. So, um, so on the duty is our semi-finalist for this year. So as we finish up our own PSAT day for this school year, um, this is why nine percent of eleven graders take it here at Pom Rock High School. And, um, we, uh, appreciate the dedication and support that our students and staff show every year with this assessment, um, and with this tool. And then again, congratulations to all of our students and, um, the recognition that you hold in being Pom Rock High School students. Thank you.
Next we have simple of minutes. We have a motion to approve some minutes for September twenty ninth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting of the Board of Education. Uh, thank you Heather. Do you have a second? Or Roger, second? Any questions? Yes, all those in favor?
Hi.
Great, carries. Uh, next we have information and proposals, um, Policy and Curriculum Committee, Ms. Heather's wire.
Uh, Policy and Curriculum Committee met this evening. Uh, we have few items on our agenda, first of which was to, um, look at our two thousand and twenty-six calendar. So, um, we have decided that starting in twenty twenty-six, we and C will be monthly meeting. Instead of an hour, we and her long, um, we will still meet before, uh, full board meetings. We will do so once at the beginning of whatever meeting happens first. Um, we also meant to discuss, uh, a couple of policies. One of note is something that we was, uh, brought before the whole board fairly recently towards the end of last year. Um, and that was, uh, our investment funds policy, which defines the capital expense and institutional expenses. Um, and following some, uh, advice from, uh, our council and auditors, uh, we discussed some changes that we pursue there, um, although we're going to seek some advice before we move that more policy down and bring it back to the board. Um, we also moved forward with a state mandated policy on school climate. So coming to a full board of, of meeting near you. Any questions?
All right, next we have Finance Committee, uh, Ms. Shannon Kowal.
So we met a long time. I was like, wait, this is about. But October, right, eighteenth, sixth, um, right, Mary St. Johnson. And we discussed kind of write the letter piece as, as is coming, right, as we close out the audit, it's what we're going to do with those funds. That's why we kind of kicked that back to Heather. I think typically we discussed how this money would go into a capital reserve account, but based on some feedback that it should all go into this educational fund now, so we should discuss how, um, we're going to vote and utilize that policy. That's why we kind of had this pause, kicked it back to our friends at Policy and Curriculum. So we're going to look at that. Um, we also, sorry, I'm like pulling up. We also talked about, um, the capital plan, right, and where that is out for five years. We also talked about Gainfield, right? And that's something we're just going to kind of keep on the radar. I know that's come up where there is some traffic. We are routing me, Joe, Josh, or routing people, right, through you all to try to see if that, um, is something we can alleviate or how that settles as we move throughout the school year, but it is something that we are looking at. Um, and then, oh, also the state of Connecticut easement check. So we got the easement check for what the state of Connecticut took us, took, gave us from the space they took us was one thousand one hundred. So not gonna run to the bank. Maybe we could buy a, a new laptop, but that might be. Oh, no. Yeah.
All right, any questions for? Okay. Uh, next we have PTO Advisory, um, Ms. Sharon Addick. She is, has a work conflict tonight, um, but she did ask me to update the board, um, that PTO Advisory met, um, oh nine October, especially, you know, October ninth. The focus of the conversation was on, one, uh, bus driver appreciation, um, honoring our bus drivers. Two, the grant process. Three, um, ASO usage at school events and for the GES pickup line. The next meeting will be oh six, November twenty twenty-five at nine thirty at Central Office. That's right. Um, all right. Next we have the Superintendent's Report, Superintendent Smith.
Thank you. Couple of things. Uh, the time of, uh, bus driver appreciation day, uh, just, uh, there are a group of folks that we cannot run school without. Every group is, uh, very integral to the running of the school district. So appreciate the work they do. I had a question over the weekend from, uh, a board member about the AWS outage that took place last week. I can say that's the Amazon Web Service that took down along the East Coast. Uh, while there was, uh, some of our systems were, uh, interrupted for a short period of time and we had no major interruption to our, uh, kind of operational structures. Uh, I do think that as we move into a world that is completely, uh, integrated with the internet, uh, there is a lot of kind of cross pollination, uh, but there was nothing that brought us down for any length of time. And we're not, uh, kind of inconvenienced from anything that backed our operations. I'll pause there before I shift over to update, um, GES. Yes. Uh, I am, uh, uh, square. So, uh, Mr. Marcino and I work in partnership. We're, uh, our friends at Tech Todd have put this together, um, that, uh, this evening join us. So we're going to help the, uh, get some, uh, get talked through it. Uh, what we tried to do, so there's a lot of information out there. There's a lot of slideshows, um, there's a lot of recordings. What we tried to do is if you were entering this conversation today, here's a summary of where we are and where we're going. Um, and I hope this kind of puts a, uh, maybe a marker in the ground for people looking to engage in the conversation. Can tell us how much we missed the mark or hit the mark and what question we got going forward. Uh, I start with, this is the timeline that we're working with. Uh, if we are still intending to do a May referendum, these are the things that we need to work through. Um, currently you'll see that red bar on the top, the land due diligence is what we're going to talk a little bit about tonight. Um, parallel to that are some community and staff engagement that is happening, but also needs to continue. Uh, come to December, we'll have to start at some conceptual designs, uh, and we're preparing for the referendum in May. The bottom part, in order to, uh, apply for state reimbursement, that's the grant application process. Uh, white, blue are things that are currently in practice and the dark blue is, uh, kind of crunch time when you start to get to those things. Is Mr. Nelson back there? This TV is out. I don't know if, um, turn it on. What's that?
I said, that, the bar will turn.
So, yeah.
No, I know.
Uh, we'll get this one turned off for you. So kind of here's where, uh, kind of a summary of the two buildings we're looking at. Gainfield constructed in nineteen forty-one. Uh, Pom Rock, uh, U is nineteen seventy-seven. The age, how the structure, current enrollment for both buildings. Uh, the middle column there is the existing square footage of the buildings. Um, the part in green is the part that I think is important for us to focus on. So if Gainfield were to be built today based on state reimbursement specs, it is thirty-five percent larger than the state allowable space. Uh, and PES is twenty-two percent larger. And where that's relevant, if you look at that state standard, the projected enrollment at the new schools that we're talking about would be, we had five hundred and four. The projected square feet of both of those buildings at ninety-five thousand, there's their respective numbers that they would be over, uh, the state formula. And why that's important is all through the project, um, we talked about building a school that's right sized and not trying to back into the state formula. Uh, and so those numbers are the delta. I'll talk about it a couple of different ways and how that manifested referendum, uh, but yes.
Good question. How do we get from the three nineteen and the three ninety-five to the five oh four?
So two pieces. One, that's based on projected enrollment. Uh, and our enrollment report is, uh, the current one we're working off of is, uh, it's, uh, uh, because of the November of twenty-four. Um, it was updated in October of twenty-five, um, but we're looking about six years out, I think, as it says. Uh, and then, uh, the additional piece there, and I'll talk to a little more tonight, but that includes a preschool. Currently PES and GES do not have preschools in them. So this factors in about a hundred students at a preschool program in each of those schools.
Can I, I want to ask a question about preschool, but I talked to Joe, like, we'll talk about that and we're talking about building the school. If we get a, um, a breakdown, right, this is what we're going to save with the fifteen percent of preschool, but this is what it's going to cost you for more teachers or whatever.
Yeah. So I do have some numbers in there on what we're going to save, um, that I'll talk to you a couple of times tonight. But you're looking at about thirty million dollars in, um, building incentives if you put a preschool into the school. Uh, but I'll show you how we get to that number. Uh, and if you, if you spec it out as annual costs, this is where it gets a little like, we could talk about what your variables are, how many staff you're looking at, but worst case scenario, if you even use a million dollars, which is north of where we be, it'd still be a thirty-year, uh, build, you know, you're going to get thirty million in upfront costs. It would take you thirty years, a million a year to get there. So, um, we're going to continue to recommend, uh, that we look at putting a preschool in. Uh, the other piece is that our expectation of state of Connecticut is going to mandate universal preschool. So whether or not you put this in, it's going to be something that we need to deal with as a community. But we'll talk to that a couple of times.
Question about the ninety-five thousand. Uh, is that kind of based on they're looking at what we would plan the school and kind of look that way?
Yeah, is it a meeting with teachers, administrators, looking at current class size practices? That's where that metric comes in.
Five oh four is an include also maybe if we did like a light district thing too. I thought we could talk about maybe something.
Yeah. So depending a little bit on what we decide as far as building and what space, again, we'll show some of that tonight. Um, there may be a need for some district day pending. There'll probably be either way, but depending on what, what it looks like.
So in this one include, right, all the proposals that are sitting with Southbury right now on changing the zoning downtown to include like the seventy-two apartments above some of those vacant spaces, right? Like those one and two bedroom apartments, right? This is, like, I just want to.
There was just an article about that.
Yeah, I read. I just want to think about, right, like, when I'm talking about those middle area as well, when you're talking about thirty to seventy apartments, you're talking about a hundred, a hundred and thirty children potentially. Um, but those numbers don't include any zoning and process now. That's not.
Correct. These are both larger than the current schools. They do not take into account new construction. And I can't, like, and we bring Tech Todd back in, there is some pieces about how much of, um, variable you can, kind of like, you can't build a school like just in case. So, um, that's a little bit out of my wheelhouse, but.
So if it shifted like, right, so say there's apartments in Southbury, right, shifted and got approved, right, the zoning got changed between then and now, right, would we then add those projections and we would change this like before? Like, I'm just wondering, because I know there's a bunch in both towns that are kind of up for redeveloping more.
So the five oh four includes pulling some students out of Long Meadow, create space based on current enrollment and projected enrollment at Long Meadow and MBS. Uh, on this timeline here, uh, we have, until we set the referendum, we can play with some of those markets. Once we set the referendum language, which is where we're going to end tonight with, not that we're setting it, but just to give people an idea of like what it might look like and how that matters in our discussion, uh, we, until we set that, you'll have some ability to reflect that.
Just, I'm sure, is the five oh four include the preschool or does?
Yes.
That's.
Yep. And, and just to clarify, the preschool would, there would still be some students that pay tuition to attend. So it generates income as well.
Yes. And, uh, again, we were, so there's, we've been in a couple of meetings this year where the state is talking about some, uh, financial incentives per ele, if we go to a universal pre-K model, that they would fund school districts to assert my teacher needs. It's not right in the end in law that I've seen so far, but, uh, if you were at a meeting where we heard a hundred thousand per classroom to help offset the staffing costs. Again, there's a difference between being in a meeting in September or October and we'll see where the legislation is.
Would be one time thing or?
Uh, I know, I think it would be annual. Yeah.
I know, you're going to get a passenger one slide. All right. Uh, you said we were going to be setting the referendum language tonight?
No, 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 no.
Oh, I thought you said we were setting it tonight.
I'm going to show you some examples. I'm going to show you some examples. We're not going to set the referendum language until, hold on.
Long time.
Yeah. Yeah. I believe it's thirty days before May, but I can't, I don't quote beyond that exact timeline, which is why I wanted to give you some samples. So you just, you have some things there.
Okay.
Long, long runway we're going to get.
You know how well I like.
Yes. There's no steps. You have to sign nothing tonight.
Thank you.
Uh, but there's a lot of things floating around. So when we left last time, these were the three, uh, recommendations from the space committee. There was three D, which was to basically build either kind of one combined or, uh, two buildings on one campus. Then there was to use our existing sites, build schools on both of those sites. And four C, which was build on Gainfield and then look for a new site for PES or one of the, the schools. So these were the, um, cost breakdowns of the total project cost. That's TPC. Then there's the cost to the district that is that the state bond reimbursement. So that's where you see the seventy-eight, eighty-seven, and eighty-six. This is where we left off. Moving forward, so over the summer, we looked at, uh, every property in town that is ten or more acres or private and public land. We've reviewed the topography, wetlands, geographic location, potential sale, the overall viability of every piece of those properties. Uh, there is one private owned property that has, still has some potential, but we've not heard back from the owners as to their interest. This is the one the board talked about in executive session. Uh, even if we do hear back, this one creates some challenges that do limit its viability. The fact that it's this linear site and there's wetlands attached to it. Uh, so even right now, we don't believe anybody's interested in selling it, but even if they are, there becomes some challenges. So based on the first three bullets, uh, at this point in time, we believe that option three D, that the one school on a large site is not possible and that we should focus our efforts on, uh, option four, whether that be two schools on existing or two schools, one on existing and one on a piece of property. So these are options four B and four C. They are building two schools for five oh four student, uh, five hundred and four students, not five oh four students. Five hundred and four students, uh, and the academic class size, these are the numbers kind of that we were going for Dr. Ramado about some of the assumptions that were built into them. Uh, and just as a point of reference, the state guidelines in their formula base the number of classrooms you need on a class size of twenty to twenty-two. So right out of the gate, we're not using their formula, which is where you get that we need more square feet than the state can usually need. Um, which I'll show you how that shows up.
Just, I know you showed it before. It kind of goes with the there where it's current.
I'll say, we're going to revisit that. Yeah, right here, actually. Uh, so here are the two schools, the projected size and the, from the conversations with, uh, the educators and our current expectation is that we build a school of ninety-five thousand square feet. It stayed alive, but I think this is your question, John.
No, if I was out in kids, their class size, they had thirteen kids, eighteen kids. My question was, is that comparable to what we do now?
Yes, that is exactly based on where we're at now. Uh, and we, we started this from, we don't want to propose building new schools with expectations different than the community has today. Uh, and so in order to do that, you'll see that that delta is the difference between kind of the state formula and our current expectation. Uh, and it's possible that that fifty-one thousand square feet may not qualify for reimbursement. So then, um, we'll talk about what that means. State reimbursement summary you'll have over there is that general construction is the forty-nine percent. That's if we did nothing else, that's our state formula right now. There's an additional fifteen percent for, um, including the preschool. There's some space that isn't, um, calculated and that's how you get sixty-one percent reimbursement for the sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-three square feet. I'm going to do the math for you in this one. That's, uh, so, uh, so when you do that, the options on the left-hand side are the assumptions being built into these structures. Uh, currently these numbers do not include, if you were to build on the existing space for PES, this does not include the demolition of the existing site. Uh, and it does not include any sale of, uh, property or if we would need to buy property. But here are the breakdown of, and this is, this is pretty much the same, whether you went with four B or four C, when you could control for demolition or purchase. Uh, the cost of the school, um, is, uh, the effective reimbursement rate for that, um, would give you a project. And here's where things are going to get a little, uh, rocky. The total project cost for both schools would be two hundred and six million. That, but when you debt the state reimbursement, it's the hundred and twelfth million. And this assumes like no space waiver. So one of the things that you can do is you can go to the legislature and you can ask them for that delta and say, based on our community and the needs of our district, we need a space waiver. So that twenty-five thousand square feet here is included in the reimbursement. If you were to do that, this is how the numbers work with a space waiver.
Do we, the consultants give us any, you know, idea? Can we get it? Not get it?
Not really. Yeah. So, um, it has been a fairly common practice for districts to ask and receive space waivers, but nothing's guaranteed. It's done through the legislative process, um, and in a couple of slides. It's done through the legislative process, uh, and in a couple of slides, you'll notice one additional complexity with the way the process works now.
Yeah, so on a previous slide, we showed the three options. We have four B being eighty-seven million, four C being eighty-six million, now we say four B or four C eighty-two million. So could you just explain if someone's looking at this context, that discrepancy?
Yeah, so the discrepancy before was. The uh, how you calculate and the uh, state reimbursement cost and the preschool. So I do not believe. This here.
Well, let me, I'm also just noticing this says presented on June fourth, so it's possible.
I could cycle back to them too, I mean, we tried to make sure the numbers match, I agree with you.
I think if we're showing numbers, we just should be very clear what number the pressure put there.
So, um, you know, so we took, that's why I had another slide, here's, here's the, the piece, we can put it back in here, so the state updated the reimbursement.
Oh, yes, the percentage, okay, so it was a change in the last couple of months, yes.
Which, and and it's a change that's not you, uh, not usual for them to update reimbursement rate, usually they do it once a year. This year, they've done it, they did uh, update in the fall, which these numbers include and the other number is not. And it's funny, we had a slide in there.
Yeah, we took it out. So the number we should have in our heads, if the space waiver goes through, is eighty-two million. Knowing that that is a pie in the sky, we haven't even put pen to paper yet, if the space waiver doesn't go through, you could expect the two schools to be about a hundred.
Yes.
And the architects feel fairly confident, but nothing's guaranteed that we would be eligible for this place.
We are definitely eligible to ask.
And a hundred and twelve does not include, does not include the purchase of property?
Neither of those include if there's a purchase of property or the sale of property or the demolition of G E S.
It includes demolition of G E S?
Yes.
Okay.
So the G E S one is kind of, uh, when we start to look at variables, um, the G E S one has the fewer variables. Because we know that that's the site.
We get. Can we get tighter numbers on if we were polishing?
Yeah, uh, we were on to, one of the other questions about P E S is where the septic system on P E S lies. Because if it's currently behind the school, we want to build, that's different than if it's in front of the school, so um, as we're going, like, there's still a. Lot of questions that need to be answered, but we wanted to try to put a little bit of a marker down for people to come up to see.
I think future is really not an option.
Sally, this gets a little more detailed into kind of some of the breakdown of where those costs come from. Again, this one, we tried to make it uh, as clean as possible, that this is without the space waiver, I wanna manage expectations. This is with the space waiver, uh, the buildings themselves are the same, it is really the effective reimbursement rate that shifts. Uh, the one property that's still uh, up for discussion is this one on Roxbury Road. Uh, the opportunities and challenges of this property have not changed since the last time the board saw them. Uh, what has shifted is the current effort on phase one, um, so what we are currently looking at on this property is the basic land records. That they do a review of the history of the land and what the site has been used for in the past, uh, they start to do an environmental study and a history of the site. Uh, if that all comes back positive, uh, and without concern, then the recommendation would be to do the phase two, which does like sort of sampling. Uh, and a more detailed look at what it would cost to build on that rock.
But that's all your.
This is a one total rock, yes, and at this point, I mean, what we call them and everything else, we can still talk about, but at, it would basically mean relocating P E S to this site. Um, the board has seen this, but I think just to try to create a complete document, this is the legislation. That puts the fifteen percent reimbursement on the entire project. Uh, one piece that we do think is important to mention, uh, we, this is not guaranteed forever. So while it's in current legislation, um, this is, you have two buildings priced at about a hundred million dollars each. But this is where I get the thirty million in reimbursement, uh, we are one relatively mid to small sized school district. Uh, if many other districts start to take advantage of this, this state could reevaluate percentage. Uh, I think this is an opportunity for us to put in preschool space that's reimbursed. Um, before the state decides to mandate it without any reimbursement, so.
Do we have to guarantee so many classrooms that apply for this?
This is the legislation as written here, so it does say at least ten years. Says shall maintain such early childhood care and education program for at least ten years.
So it could be two kids, it could be fifty kids.
All I know is it says it shall maintain it for ten years. This is, my suggestion would be not to let the legislation fester for too long and have too many people ask some of those questions. The next piece, so additionally, uh, we have certain specialized education programs. Specifically the one at operating elementary right now, um, which would definitely go into the uh, replacement of P E S. Right now, we are unable to put this program or a similar program at game field because of the first stairs in the building. But a new school would certainly lend itself to that, uh, and when you build a program specifically for children with special needs. The square footage that will service that program is reimbursed off fifteen percent, so it's not the whole building, but. Of the square footage in there, um, that applies, so there are um, five or six thousand, maybe a more square feet that apply to this, it's in one of the.
This again is guaranteed or?
Yeah, no, that's, that's guaranteed, the, the two fifteen, well, the four fifteen percent. Um, the preschool is the whole space guaranteed, this is the square footage specific to this program guaranteed.
Right, right.
The space waiver is a boat at the legislature, at the legislature. Yes, you can stack these counts.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's specialized space thirty percent.
Yes, yes, I can't stack it past a hundred percent reimbursement, I'll be plenty, plenty of.
It is close to.
Yes, exactly.
Don't worry about that there.
Yes. Um, so what, this is referendum language, it's nothing that we have to set, but I wanted to show you some examples, because one of the challenges. Is that the referendum has to technically be the entire cost of the project, not assuming any state reimbursement. So it is likely that we will get state reimbursement, the question is going to be how much? Whether it's the forty-nine percent, sixty percent, whether the space waiver for the twenty-five thousand square feet is included or not. Those, we will not have that answer at referendum, so you need to be uh, specific in the referendum line. So I took some examples here, I'm gonna email this presentation to you too, so you don't have to try to read it off your slide.
Do us a favor, do personally a favor, can you, when you email them to, can you zoom in, so like, wait, email us, so I can actually, but.
So, yeah, when, when you see the PDF, you'll have this as one.
Perfect, thank you.
Uh, but what you'll see, uh. I don't know if this is the, I'm sorry, I wanted to show you the Weathersfield. Because the Weathersfield one talks about two hundred and thirty-nine billion for the construction of. Uh, the school and the renovations, but their bond amount to the town will actually be eighty-eight million dollar bond. So referendum mentions both, uh, and then the more interesting part for region fifteen is then that eighty-eight million. Will be divided by the A D M number, so sixty-six to thirty-three by town.
Well, how do they get from two thirty million to eighty?
So their reimbursement rate is higher than sixty percent, so some towns are as high as eighty-five percent.
Now, would we have to then break it down by each town because the A D M could change?
So, but, yeah, it does, but the, so the debt service number is what is really, like, once that bond is enacted, that service that will come in. Uh, so in this case, the school budget is unlike, um, where this was Weathersfield. It won't be the town going out for bond, it'll be us, so our impact will be whatever that eighty-six million was. Would be the town, would be the school budget that we're asking for. The part that people really wanna know is what's it's gonna be my taxes, uh, and that's gonna have to be a partnership with the town. We talked about the mill rate and what do you want, you, you could use a three, three-year average of the A D M or something like that. Uh, I mean, I think once you get to that level, whether you're a percentage or two, one way or the other, from the average mill rate impact is gonna be kind of negative.
Thought when you were saying you don't know the amount that you actually get reimbursed, it's like antique. Not that it would have been two thirty-nine and two thirty-nine, not eighty-eight, because they don't know that they're getting the, like, how can they do that? What if they don't get a full amount, don't have, have to ask for the wrong numbers?
So they have to, so let's assume the state, I don't think it's ever happened, but the state said, we're not gonna give you any reimbursement. Uh, you have to do the whole two hundred and thirty-nine million, well, this town, this town here has eighty-eight billion. So you have to decide, are you gonna restructure your project on the eighty-eight billion, or are you gonna go out for another referendum? Uh, so that's kind of where we have some of those decisions, especially when you start to look at the potential for some of our square footage not to be reimbursed. So like, we may say not to exceed a hundred and twenty-nine million, uh, but we really might only need eighty-five million. Uh, and I think some of the conversation that's taken place in the past among the community is if they give us, let's say, the hundred and twelve million. Then we get the higher reimbursement and we only need the eighty-six million, that we're gonna have to have a conversation, like. I don't wanna, I don't wanna just say, hey, trust us, we're not gonna go over, but I do think that's kind of the, the open conversation we have to have is. If we get a higher reimbursement rate, we're not gonna pocket twelve million dollars and bond it anyway. Uh, here's our intent, and whatever that intent is, we could say, we can take that money and invest it in putting roofs on, or we just say, we're not gonna bond it. Uh, that, that's, I don't wanna, I don't wanna kind of usurp the conversation of the board, but that is a conversation that we'll have to.
If we set up a bond, get approved, and then figure out, we all need that, can we change the bond?
Uh, we, we would know before we set to bond them. Because when you apply for the state reimbursement grant, we'll know all that, but we'll go to referendum in May. And the state legislators won't finish until June, so that's kind of that difference. But our grant is due to the state on June thirtieth, and we'll know by then the reimbursement.
We had the feasibility committee here last month, um, there's Mr. Michaels who suggested something very similar happened when we built Long Meadow. Where we did get the additional reimbursement and then how the district chose to use those funds. Only five years ago caused some friction, right, it would be interesting if we anticipate a potential scenario like that again, to understand what that was and what the precedent was. So we can have a look. You'd have to reprogram the bond, so if, if you had additional dollars set a bond, until you don't build a second pool. You can't, you'd have to go back or reauthorize again to reallocate the bond now.
Right, we don't know what the district used that delta for twenty, I mean, Long Meadow was approved, and there was a delta that was used, we don't know what it was.
I was, I know the turf field was always been ten, I wasn't sure which, when he was talking about that, if that was, I know, it was one, when the high school edition was done. Turf was a part of the bond originally, and they built the turf, so I think that was, I wasn't sure if he's overlapping it to or not, that I don't know. So we all know what the situation is.
So when do you expect that we're gonna have information from the phase one? Um, exploration of the Roxbury Road property and some harder numbers on the plant B?
So I believe that by Thanksgiving, we will have the phase one of this rock. It may have four letters, but I feel like we will have that. Uh, you say four B, yeah, we talked about the demolition of P E S.
Yeah, so I mean, there come, there is gonna come a point where this board is going to have to decide, are we gonna go with option? Four B or four C, do we call it something different, option one, option two, I have no idea, but.
Do whatever you want.
But we, like, at some point, this board is going to have to decide, like, which direction to go. With, with these schools, so. You think they weren't have the four, um, the Roxbury Road phase one completed, um, there wasn't, um. And we need harder numbers on existing. Schools and what that would look like, so option.
Yep.
So we need harder numbers on option, option four B and the phase one analysis of four C.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay.
And the four B, things that may like demolition maybe cost, septic.
Right.
So the three pieces that we don't have an answer to completely, I, I feel like there's some rough numbers, I don't wanna just throw them out there without some backup, but. Uh, the three pieces on the P E S existing property are where the septic is located. Which they have, we just didn't visit it today, uh, in order to build behind P E S, we have to build an access road from Rochambeau to the back of P E S. Uh, what the cost of that would be and what the demolition of P E S be. Uh, the other unanswered questions are whether or not. It's, uh, we can tap into the sewer system or game field or the Roxbury Road site. Uh, we can access water on all three sites.
So when you're getting these numbers, are they going to be pretty close to accurate? Because I, I would hate to get a number that's either astronomically higher than it's going to be, and we, oh, look, we saved money and blah, blah, blah. Or astronomically lower and we weren't prepared.
So I am not an architect or an construction expert, I would tell you that based on the variables that are available. For them to factor in today, they will be pretty solid.
Okay.
I don't know what asphalt's gonna cost or. They're gonna have, like, there's an escalator, but, you know, I mean, if all of these numbers are based on conditions with whatever assumption, I mean. No new COVID was coming, right, so if there's anything, I, I just wanna be as transparent as possible. We're gonna enter all of this with all the known variables that we can, and then we're gonna have to adjust to whatever we don't know, right, I mean, that's every building.
Yeah, until you lay out the school across that ground and know in one elevator or two or four, and depending how, how the topography works, once it's laid down. Because right now, while we have exceptional blocks, we have actually, obviously, there's no design of school on what that will look like.
I'm, I'm more worried about access road cost, demolition of P E S. Uh, can we tap into the sewer for G E S or Roxbury Road and costs, like, that's where I expect them to come in with pretty solid numbers.
So, that is, so I'm working with them, I will, we are all working, like, so by January, we're kind of gonna have to know those things, right? Like, we're gonna need building design, you're gonna have to start doing, uh, the uh, building committee. We're gonna have to start getting into like the specs of the schools that would be built, uh, so we can't do that. Uh, until we know some of those things, at the same time, you can't wait too long, you know, uh, or we're gonna run out of.
Just legislatively, would, um, if, if this involves acquiring or selling land, is that a separate referendum question too? Like, with the, or acquired Roxbury Road property, how would that factor into the timeline with that for this?
So. I guess there's a couple of variables, so in order for us to purchase land, uh, that would have to be on a refer. Our current thinking, it would be a different question on the same refer. Uh, the sale of land is a little different in that we couldn't really sell the land until after we had a place to, you know. And so it wouldn't be, the sale of the property wouldn't show up on this refer. Like, you come up with questions, you know, I want, like, this is, we have some space, but at the same time, you know. Uh, we wanna have updates every meeting for you, so that you can say it for.
The other thing that's on my mind when we talk about these costs is, um.
Is, is the potential impact of, of cost escalation as well. So, um, you know, I, I think the architects indicated that they were pretty solid on these numbers. Um, but as we move forward in time, those numbers are going to change with inflation and other cost escalation. So, um, you know, I, I just want to be conscious of. I know we're working towards a referendum timeline in May, May, but if that, um, we don't need that. You know, there's potential that we have to readjust, uh, some of these numbers. Um, and on that note, um, I'm very much interested in the second slide schedule. And what needs to happen before we get to a referendum. I do think there's all, there's a lot in there, um, and I. Concerned about having enough time to, to get there. Um, and, you know, it seems to me that standing up that building committee happens pretty late. You know, and as, uh, as related to actually looking at those specs. Um, would it be a similar process as, um, feasibility committee? Where, you know, the building committee is reviewing the architects and reviewing specs and, you know, coming up with a, you know. Fifteen possible solutions and then having narrow it down to one or, um, is it more of a, you know? You know, here's two or three things that you could possibly fit on this property.
I would see if it comes in after that.
Mm-hmm.
So really it's the board, it's going to decide, we're going to build on this property, we're going to build school on it. I don't want to take any authority away from board, but I, I, I think that you have to look and build in two schools.
Yeah.
And whether you build them on the existing property, I think to me, the game field decision is, is done. The only decision left is really P E S on existing or maybe the Roxbury, we don't have enough information to make that decision yet, but that's the decision. The building committee really walked its form this year. The heavy lift of the building committee doesn't really come until the next phase. Which happens after the referendum and after we submit the grant. And while they'll be involved with the grant, um, and some of those building specs. It's really after that, like during the construction, which isn't going to start until June of twenty-seventh. Uh, that, that's really where the heavy lift of building.
And the building committee is, it's made up by statute, like there's, it's a statutory, um, they delineate who has to be on that committee, right?
Different.
It's different than doing the feasibility study.
Okay, I, I guess what I'm wondering is. When do the, when do we get a picture of what that's like? Is that before the referendum, after the?
Oh, with a refer, okay.
We get, we get like a blueprint where we can say, here's your school community. This is what it's going to look like.
So I would stop short of saying, right? We'll get, we'll get some design images, we'll get some maybe. I guess knowing who's out there in the community, I'm not sure you're going to get like stack of like, you know, room by room, but you'll get kind of a layout of the building. You'll get some architectural drawings, what it's going to look like. If you were to build, actually, in any of the spaces, where it'll sit, how it'll look. Uh, and that board will have some, some input in. And that's really why, like, by December, January, kind of have to decide what property you want to build. Uh, uh, you know, and again, I don't know that it's locked in stone, but in order to do some of the design pieces, like, um, where is it, you know? The P E S one in some ways is, you have less options, you know, like, there's only one road to go in and out. Plus maybe that access road that, uh, Rochambeau allows for a bus loop, I don't know that, uh, afterwards. But, uh, you know, the other property has got it more like campus, so you have some options there. Uh, these based on what we have to get.
Um, you can allow me to suck up more. Um, I mean, I agree, maybe Marion, four B, four C, these are not. Names that are selling themselves to anybody. Uh, so I guess, uh, I guess I'd like to propose something, just throw it out there. Call them, you know, build and place plan and the choir property. Those are. I don't know that I'm up with those, either of those languages, but I just think it's more descriptive than four.
Hmm, I was expecting something funny.
I, you know, I, I was, I was, I was thinking about it and I was like, no, I'm sitting half the time, Heather, sitting half the time.
But how about the Heather playing in the.
Yeah, that's even more confusing, even more confusing.
Heather A or Heather B?
Yeah. Heather Dwyer or Heather Broderick, yeah.
Just a quick clarification on the architectural process. So understanding that we have some conceptual designs for the referendum, so people can kind of see what they're voting on. Um, my prior understanding is that we kind of gave Techton the go-ahead. To be kind of our, you know, we're not going to put that out to our, because we don't have time, they're going to be the conceptual architects. But if this is approved, we have to go through a more formal architectural design and review phase. That might be something where the building committee might look at architects, but there's going to be, there is a second architectural phase. It's not like the pictures you get in March is exactly what the school is going to be.
You're going to, you're seeing pretty close layouts, the pictures and designs, it's going to be a pretty complete building, because that's all. Cause that's the piece that goes straight to the state, all your processes are based on. By classrooms, the layout, can think of a long metal is kind of that triangle shape, all of it will fit into the property and it's pretty well hammered out. Drawing and designed by them. Yes, you, you have an architect that will do the build and actual work with the C M P, the final phase, the construction phase. But the design piece will be at that point, um, fairly well.
The art, the construction companies and.
All that's.
All of that will be done by the building committee after the refer.
That they're, uh, like, but clearly there were more changes, right? Like material availability.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, or like, hey, glass is more expensive now because of tariffs, so.
They got some windows.
Like, so there will be, there should be an expectation, there will be some.
Would it have windows?
Yeah.
And that's the building committee's job, which is part of this by statute, you have to have like construction, there's people that have to be out there.
Jeff is building a change rate percentage into this project already, which is pretty standard, if I was carrying it, five to 10 percent, there, there's, there's always a percentage that carries.
All right, so we're going to get an update on this in November.
Yeah.
On the base one and some harder numbers on, on four B.
Yeah, so our intent is to keep this basement standing item and to update you at every meeting. Based on the questions that you have and what information you need, both of the symptoms.
Any other questions before?
November me.
I don't, I don't know, we're going to have to, I said Thanksgiving, so I'm guessing the second Thanksgiving or second meeting.
Soon as we have it, then we'll build it in.
Right. All right, um, next we have, um, board member comments. Comments by board members. Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
Real quick, our student rep, uh, Liza mentioned R M S had a Hispanic Heritage Cultural Night. Um, I was lucky enough to attend, I didn't know what I was walking into, but, um, I got to the parking lot and I was like, I wonder what other things are going here? Cause like the parking lot was so full, there was over a hundred people at that event and it was phenomenally done. And at one point, Michael came over and, you know, made sure I knew, like, this is all student run. We have staff members who were helping them, but like this was a student-led initiative, really, really impressive. So I really enjoyed that event. I do hear that they're looking to do more of these, uh, celebrating other cultures. Uh, and a special shout out to the very brave students and the very brave staff that participated in some of these dances on stage in front of the aforementioned. One hundred people in attendance, uh, but it was really a great event and, uh, looking forward to the next one.
Any other comments? All right, uh, next we have comments from citizens. The Board of Education will recognize citizens from Middlebury and Southbury. And citizens are asked to state their name, their town of residence and to limit their comments to time with us. Any citizens? Nope. Right. Uh, next we have announcement of future meetings. Um, Monday, November tenth, P and C's meeting at the Media Center, there's a high school at six thirty. Monday, November tenth, we have our regular board meeting at seven thirty. Um, Wednesday, November twelfth, finance meets, um, at M I H A at six thirty. Monday, November twenty-fourth, P and C's meeting at six thirty at the High School Media Center. Followed by November twenty-fourth, our regular meeting of the board event at seven thirty. They have a motion to move into executive session. Move that the Board of Education go into executive session for the purpose of discussing superintendent's methods for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. And the P A A bargaining agreement, July first, twenty twenty-six to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine, with possible action. And to invite superintendent's men and child meeting and also invite Joe Martin Galen. That's the. It turns. And.
What's that? Sheldon.
Sheldon. And can we also invite Shelley Vinaldi into the second.
Thank you, Shannon. Um, any discussion? All those in favor? Any names, suggestions?